Nine o'clock, let's go ahead and call a meeting of order.
I'm going in.
Oh, Mr. Enin's not here today, okay. Opening prayer this morning, who had, was it? Ms. Taylor, you have it?
Yes, sir.
Let us pray. Father above, we thank you for awaking us this morning and for allowing us to be part of your creation, and we thank you for allowing us to have a small part in the governance of this county. We ask that you lead us now as we proceed into this meeting. I pray this in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Ms. Taylor. The Stanford pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That brings us down to amendments to the agenda. I don't have any. Mr. Morris, are you on the phone? Mr. Morris?
I have any.
Okay. You have any amendments?
Nope.
Thank you.
I don't have any.
Mr. Taylor?
I have none.
Mr. Ross?
None.
Mr. Bowsart?
None.
Mr. Eldridge?
None.
Nope. Mr. O'Neill?
None.
Okay.
I have two for executive session. One is update on Jackson County versus George County litigation, and the other is potential litigation with regard to an incident that happened at the county golf course.
Okay. Are there any others? Anyone else? Go ahead.
Arne has an addition to the docket.
Amendment they need to make? All right. Could I get an order approving amendments to the agenda?
I'll move.
A second. Motion by Mr. Taylor, a second by Mr. Ross. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, no. I have a notice to increase assessment of real or personal property here. This is 1715 Vermont LLC. It's at 1,000 North Halsted Road, Suite B in Ocean Springs. It is pin number 61220012.000. Anyone here representing 1715 Vermont LLC? All right. Could I get a motion to accept it?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Ross, a second by Mr. Bowsart. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no.
Aye.
Thank you. Is anyone here for general public comments? I think I saw.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
My name is Judith Patalo-Peoples. I am a resident of Ocean Springs, Mississippi. I have been coming up here for 10 years now. I can't even believe it, but I have. You know, the last time I was here, we were talking about, so there was some mention of Facebook, and it seems like it's the villain of all times, in my opinion, with getting news out and getting misinformation. So I only have one thing that I need to ask, and Randy, I think this is directed to you because it's mainly in your district. There's a, the general consensus believes that the county is to pay for every bridge within the cities, and I know since the annexation, your area has taken on a good bit of extra mileage and distance. So with the, the bridge being closed in Ocean Springs, it came, all it came up to was who is responsible, who is responsible? It's my understanding that when we pay our taxes, that yes, we're paying it to Jackson County, but you take a percentage of that, or Jackson County does, and the rest is given back to the city. Can you tell me the percentages on that?
So I'm gonna answer your question, and I'm gonna let Josh finish the rest of it. So the unincorporated part of my district has grown. I've lost a lot of the city limits, and I don't have any more of the city limits of Goshay anymore, and I'm down to less than 20% of the city limits of Ocean Springs after their recent annexation. So out of 29,000 people I represent, 4,000 are in the city and 25,000 are out in the most growing part of this county, okay? So that means that, that I need more funds to take care of roads and drainage and stuff in the unincorporated part of the county. So I'm gonna defer to Josh to tell you how the funds are distributed between the county and the cities.
The way that works is when, when the city annexes, the county receives, in an incorporated area for, for road, for road tax, half of it comes to the county, half of it flows back to the city, right? So when somebody, I mean, when a city annex is right, actually, the county will take a loss of revenue on that road mileage, because now, what 100% was coming to the county, now half of that flows back to the city. Half are incorporated area, half are unincorporated area. So, I mean, of course, that, you're kind of talking about a legal issue on whose responsibility that is, but the way, no, but, no, you're fine.
Not responsibility, I just wanted to know the percentages.
Oh, the percentages?
Yes.
But, but, you know, once you incorporate, your respons, the city's a responsibility for the infrastructure, the roads, the bridges. However, you know, the county has the discretion, right? Because what's good for the cities is generally good for the counties, as long as you're working together, partnering together. You know, the cities will request for support, and the county, you know, can take, use some of their discretionary funds to move back into the cities, to partner with the cities, and, you know, help set, offset the cost of a bridge, and, or roads for that fact, so. But there's no, there's no mandate that the city ha, I mean, that the county has to go in and do all the county, the city infrastructure, roads, bridges, right? Because if you take, I mean, six bridges are so expensive, if you start taking, every time a county takes and puts millions of dollars into cities, I mean, that's either millions of dollars they could have spent on infrastructure in unincorporated, or reduced mileage, you know? But it really goes to, you know, working together, having good partnerships, having the same vision, but, you know, you can't have people moving in different directions, because that's where bad communication happens and, and things fall through the cracks, so. And I'm not talking about any particular city or any, anybody in particular, but that's how it works. Half of it from, half the taxes collected by the county for roads goes back into the, into the municipality. The county keeps the other half for unincorporated roads.
And Facebook isn't your friend.
Well.
And I'll, I'll expound on that a little bit. I mean, so if you live in the city, you pay taxes, road and bridge. Like Josh said, 50% automatically by state law goes back to the city, and that goes into a fund. They can put it into Public Works and spend it to repair infrastructure and do things, or they can do other things with it. That's up to the city on how they do that. They're supposed to use it for infrastructure. Counties, in general, in the state of Mississippi, don't do a, they're not responsible for every bridge in a city limits. The city is responsible for that. Jackson County, in general, has always been supportive of our cities and tried to do things, and a lot of people think that it's supposed to be automatic, and it's not. It's something that we do because we want to help our cities, because they're county residents too, and it's all part of working together and being a team. Where they go as far as who should notify who if something's damaged or not, I would expect the city to come to us and say, hey, we got a bridge that we know is posted, we've been notified of it, we need help. And, and in general, this county would do it. The paving plans that we do in the county, the discretionary paving that we do within the cities, which is about the only paving that's gone on in any city in Jackson County for the last 12 years, is discretionary, but it's something the county said, hey, your taxpayers too, you pay into the county, we're gonna create a fund where we'll help pave roads within the city limits too. That's all discretionary money, and it's things that could go other places. We have big budgets that require a lot of costs. We've got to uphold the cost of all the infrastructure for the county, the court systems, the animal shelter, the roads and bridges outside in the unincorporated areas. There's a lot of things that that money's gotta go to, and we're still willing to help the cities everywhere we can. But the only thing we ask in return is that the cities spend things to help with infrastructure, make sure things are done right, and then ask us when they need a little leg up, and we'll help.
Yeah. And you gotta remember too, it's not one supervisor, I mean, you know, if Troy comes in and says, I wanna do this, it don't work that way. It takes three, three votes on this board to do anything, so, that's why I say, it all goes with communications, partnerships, working together for what's best for the entire county.
Troy, and the, the paving is, isn't it like how much you have in your budget for that year to pave, that you can pave?
Right. We'll budget a certain amount, and I mean, if a budget fluctuates, the numbers will fluctuate proportionally to that. But in general, our budgets have been better each year. Usually, we've seen enough growth to where our budget next year will be better than this year, unless you've had depreciation somewhere that hurts you, but in general, yes.
Randy, how many more bridges did you take on by the annexation?
We've replaced, since I've been on, since I've gotten this new area, I think we've replaced three bridges already, and, small bridges, not real big bridges, but I've got Beachview Bridge left to completely replace. That's about a four to five million dollar project right now. And then the, I can't ever pronounce this, this bridge, but it's in Latimer on Old Biloxi Road between La Rue Road and Jim Ramsey. That bridge is gonna be seven to nine million dollars, and, so I've gotta work on getting the funding to replace that. Then we have a huge bridge in the north part of the county, Tanner Williams, that's gotta be replaced. So we have plenty of bridges in the, out in the unincorporated part of the county that need to be replaced, so. We're, it's all we can do to work on the funding for those, without having to increase taxes to do that, you know? So it takes about, if you're looking for outside funding sources like the state or the federal government, it takes several years, once you get them engineered, to, to, apply for that money, to hopefully receive something to help go toward the, the cost of replacing the bridge. So that's, that's my main goal right now, is those bridges right now in the unincorporated part of the county, because the unincorporated part of the county is growing. I mean, I just looked at the agenda for the planning department, for, the planning commission meeting for Wednesday, there's over 500 lots that are on that docket to be approved or disapproved, so it's growing, you know? We've got, we got a lot of road work to do, and we gotta need the money to do it.
When you're completed with the Beachview Bridge, what do you think the life of that bridge will be?
At least 30 years, yeah. Should survive, me. There you go.
Me too. Thank y'all, y'all have a pleasant day. God bless y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, good morning. Aman Mahedin, 1219, Marcel Boulevard. The Halsted Bridge near Ocean Springs Middle School has, it's been shut down, as you know, very unexpectedly, and it's caused quite a bit of conundrum in the Ocean Springs area. I had two emergencies in, it used to take me seven minutes to get to Gulf Park Estates from my house in Ocean Springs, now it takes me like 16, 17 minutes. I had two emergencies I had to attend to with the sheriff at night, on Friday night, and I, you know, was driving that old route, had to turn around, it was just, it was just a, it was a, I had a trespasser on a, someone who had a victim on a property, came back and trespassed, and the sheriff was involved, and it just, it was like very difficult, it's very challenging to get to Gulf Park Estates. Also with the Beachview construction, the whole thing ends up being a mess, so. Are we talking about years for the Halsted Bridge to, to be replaced? What, what is the timeframe and the game plan we have between the city and the county for that?
The mayor's on his way up after you get through to.
Okay.
We've got a.
Okay.
Thing here we're gonna address.
Okay, 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 yeah, but I mean.
We've been working on it.
Okay, okay, yeah, I mean, it's just like parents are upset, citizens are upset, it's just, every route, government's doing work, Beachview's doing work, House, everybody's shut down, there's no way in and out, there's no logical way in and out of that, of that community at this point. Every, three out of four routes are have like some kind of obstruction in there, and it's, you know, we gotta develop a game plan.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
We're working on it.
Thank you, all right.
Good morning.
Good morning. Seems like the topic, huh?
Yep.
Kenny Holloway, Mayor of City of Ocean Springs. Thank y'all for allowing me to speak this morning. We have sent a resolution to the board asking for some help, assistance in opening, trying to get the bridge opened up sooner rather than later. Supervisor Bowsart and I spoke Friday, I think Friday afternoon. I think we've got a, a good plan to try to get this thing open, partnership with the city, and I think JCUA may have a hand in it, and, and the county. I'm gonna be going to Jackson on Wednesday, and I'm going to be meeting with Mr. James, who is the engineer for State Aid. I've spoken with some contractors that do bridges, and they think that this bridge can be opened back up to light traffic, automobile traffic only. Now, the engineer with State Aid, he may, he may not agree with that, but we're gonna try to do that first. And, and in the meantime, Randy's got a plan to, to work on that. You wanna, kind of, you want me to go into it, or you want to?
Don't forget what we talked about Friday, about the, I would make the offer to the state engineer that if you post a police officer at the, at that bridge 24/7 to keep trucks from going across there, I think we could get that bridge, I think we could get that bridge opened back up for, for, for traffic, with the right signage and somebody there to keep the trucks off of, you know, so. But yeah, so Joe and I, our road manager, we, we've spoken a couple of times over the last, since the bridge has been closed, and Joe's come up with a plan that I think will work. As a matter of fact, that bridge, Hanchaw Bridge, is similar to the Beachview Bridge. So it's got wood pilons that are deteriorated and stuff, so what we're, what we're proposing to do is, and we have most all the material to do it with, like we did the Beachview Bridge, is what we're proposing to the board is to allow the bridge crew, the county's bridge crew, to go and cut off the old wood pilons, put new wood pilons in, because the caps for the, for the bridge deck fit those pilons. They won't fit concrete pilons, they'll fit the wood pilons. So if we put new wood pilons in, and put the caps back on, and then put the deck of the bridge back on, so basically, we would just be putting new pilons in that should get you back to at least the, the tonnage that you had before the downgrade from the last time. We're, we're think, because that's what it did to the Beachview Bridge, it got it back to the tonnage that it was before. So the only other issue we'll have is, is that the city will be responsible for the coordination of removing the water and sewer lines temporarily. Joe, I think we can drive some pilons, huh? To let them relocate that stuff like we did on Beachview for the Great River?
Yeah, I've already talked, you put works to rest, and you kinda got a plan, the board treated today, I think we're gonna meet tomorrow.
Right. And then what we'll do is, once the city removes the water and sewer and gets everything stabilized, then the road, the bridge crew will mobilize in probably 12 weeks, Joe, you think?
Yeah, I think we can do it in six.
Okay, uh, okay. Mayor Holloway will take those phone calls, not me. So, but anyway.
Might have him forward it.
Yeah, we'll, but we'll get on, we'll mobilize once the water and sewer, gas, whatever's on that bridge is removed and temporarily secure, then we'll come in with the bridge crew, and we'll do the same thing we did on Beachview, and get it done as fast as we can, for sure, and then get it opened back up. But in the meantime, it would be, I think it would be to our advantage if you can get it open temporarily, at least till school's out.
Correct.
And then once school's out, then let us come in there and, and, and knock that bridge out while school's out. I think that would be the best.
I agree, that's the plan, yeah. So, anyway, thank you for your assistance on this. If it, if it gets voted, I'm gonna take and, and recommend to my board that we start planning on replacing that bridge in the future. We didn't realize it was in that kind of shape, we had no clue. But we'll take some of that money and apply, you know, budget it, and I believe you told me you probably could get another six or seven years out of it.
I think you could, yeah. Yeah, I mean, that's, Beachview Bridge is probably good for about 10 years, yeah, for the repairs.
So that gives us some time, you know, to start budgeting.
And of course, you'll have Davis Bayou Bridge you're gonna have to start working on.
You didn't tell me that.
Yeah, 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 you better check on that too.
Yeah, it's on the list.
It's on the list.
It's on the list, too?
Joe, what kind of notification do we get yearly on bridges that are posted? Do those flow to the cities?
Yeah, they go to the cities and the county. That bridge has been posted for a number of years, and it's kind of surprised that they closed it, I figured it was a downgrade, 4,000 pounds, and it's kind of surprised when they sent it.
Joe, when that goes to the city, who's it go to?
I don't know, it's in the paperwork.
Okay, well, I'll check with Allen on that then.
But yeah, so you got two bridges you gotta start working on.
Okay.
For funding, for sure.
As long as we know.
Now, we've already completed the engineering for Hanchaw, and we've turned it over to the city, so I think you've got some right of ways you gotta take care of.
To replace, not to fix, yes, right?
So anyway, so what I have here, I have a letter from the city, voted on by their board, to ask the county for assistance on what I just explained on the, on the Hanchaw Bridge, so I'm gonna make that in form of a motion to assist the City of Ocean Springs with the bridge repairs and, and try to get it opened up as soon as we can. I make that motion.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Thank you.
Thank you, fellas.
All right, just as soon as you get that done, y'all coordinate with Joe, and then we'll, we'll get it done.
I see that.
Thank you, Mayor.
Anybody else for general public comments? All right, we'll move on. Could I get a motion to, the Senate agenda as amended? I'll move. Motion by Mr. Taylor, I'll second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no.
Aye.
Thank you. All right, let's go to Department His. Mr. Fulton?
I'm gonna defer to Matthew on this.
Good morning, everybody. We just wanted to come give another update. We spoke about this a few meetings ago, back in January, but we have a memorandum of understanding on the agenda between the Board of Supervisors and the Gulf Coast Skate Parks Association, and this is for the skate park event that we talked about and are planning for the Lemoine Soccer Fields area. It's gonna be on March 29th, and basically, we, you know, at the time, the county didn't want to move forward with a full-fledged design of a permanent skate park there, but did want to kind of explore it. So this event is meant to, you know, show community support and gather data from the community about what type of skate park they would like to see there in the future. So we've got, we're gonna have wooden ramps built. The Gulf Coast Skate Parks Association has provided those ramps for free to the county, and they're gonna be put in the small little challenge course parking lot area that's, that was built a few years ago. We like putting it there because we can gate off that parking lot and keep traffic out of it completely while people use the wooden ramps there. They, the, the intention is to leave them there after the event as well for continued public use while we, you know, decide on whether or not we want to move forward with a permanent skate park facility there. And I, I had, you know, about a year or two in my mind, but of course, you know, that, that can be changed. We've also got Tyler Prowant here, who's the president of the Gulf Coast Skate Parks Association. He gave the presentation last time about our potential partnership, and he's just gonna mention a few details that we had planned for it.
Thank you for your time. So we're gonna be doing lessons for the kids in the morning, it's gonna start at 10:00. Then we're gonna go into a contest, we're gonna have a contest for the kids, and for the adults. We're gonna be doing some raffles and some giveaways for us to collect some funds to help if we do want to pursue a permanent skate park there. We've already had major success because we found sponsors for the event, so we already have Shane Hard Insurance, who sponsored $500. We have some comic, comic book memorabilia from Three Alarm Comics from St. Martin, and they're, they're donating things to, to be raffled off at the event. We're gonna have vendors for food, music, and all of this, while we're, we're running this event, our goal is to collect that data, like Matt was saying, so that we can come bring some, some good information to y'all about if this is a good fit. We believe that it is, because in other places that we're doing this, it's been a massive success. Like in Biloxi, we're planning Biloxi Skate Fest, we're looking at having maybe 500 people attend this one this year. We're making it even bigger, because it's gonna be a two-day event, as we work towards also getting a permanent facility for them. With that being said, the project that could take place on, in St. Martin, would be a little bit smaller in scale, so I think it would be achievable in the, in the nearer future than the one in Biloxi. But we're super excited to do this event and to do it for the community of youth out there. Recently, we've been doing demonstrate, demonstrations at some of the elementary schools, like in Woolmarket Elementary, where we came in and we hosted a demonstration with six of our champions from the previous year, and the kids just loved it. We gotta teach them about resilience, positivity, and confidence, and that's what I think that the event that we're launching in St. Martin is really gonna bring to those kids there, is those skills that it's really hard to learn in other ways, skateboarding just teaches it organically. But thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions?
You won't have to worry about me wearing it out, I know that. I promise you. No, but it sounds good, I think it'd be a good event, yeah.
Yeah, we've got, the sheriff's officers are gonna be there to help, you know, add some security for the event, and then a Cadian ambulance has also said that they would have an ambulance on the side, just in case we got any bumps or bruises.
Now, we've hosted 67 events over the last year, and not once have we had emergency services called, and that's because we, we do take safety very serious, and of course, we've talked about liability and signage being out there during that time. And with our past events, I think the reason for that success is because we're kind of guiding the culture and climate of, you know, you're skating at your own risk, but also there's people there to help teach you and show you the way. We're gonna also have helmets that we're gonna give out for free, for free until we run out to all the kids that show up, just to make sure that safety is always on, you know, forefront of everybody's minds.
Great.
Okay.
So we just need to accept the MOU?
Yeah, just sign the MOU, and there's really no financial obligations to either party, it's just kind of laying out who's doing what in terms of, you know, planning the event, and then the goals that we're trying to get out of it.
Okay. I'll make the motion.
Okay. I have a motion by Mr. Ross, a second by Mr. Bowsart, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Y'all be careful.
Anyone watching this, come skate with us.
Yeah.
Ms. Wales? You better get that. Come on.
Good morning.
Morning.
I'm presenting the order approving the claims docket this morning.
Okay. I'll make that motion.
Second.
Aye.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Inventory control.
Good morning. We have the request for the sale of two vehicles to Southern Regional Public Safety Institute.
Okay.
For those who don't know what that is, that's the police academy, so we're, we're actually helping them out. Our deputies can help, can tear up some of our cars on the obstacle course there, so.
Okay. You wanna make that motion?
Yeah, I'll make it.
All right, I have a motion by Mr. Bowsart.
Second.
A second by Mr. Taylor. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Eldridge?
Mr. Guns?
Yes, sir.
I'm in pain watching you skate at the skate.
Yeah.
I just figured I'd throw that out there.
Morning, everybody. Uh, I'll start with the construction end, where we are, what's going on with the stations. Our new station that we're building on Saraceno Road, and Matt, you correct me if I'm wrong, but it looks like we shouldn't have, be in bed with getting that station by May.
I think so, yeah. Yeah, it's coming along. We don't have any delays at all, really, so, yeah.
If you hadn't gone by there and looked at it, it's a lot more concrete than what Matt and I envisioned, but it's, uh...
Yeah, it looks good.
It's really nice station. That's our blueprint for all our future stations. Uh, Station Six, the one there on Jim Ramsey, Joe Bat, uh, we're waiting on, are we still waiting on the engineer stuff?
They're meeting today to look at the electrical items for it, and then he said we should have plans in time to start advertising that project in April.
Okay.
Then we got the, uh, Station Two, which is on Big Ridge, right there in the curve. Uh, the metal's in for it. Waiting for the contractor to get approval to put the metal up. Uh, County Maintenance Kelly's guys have done a really good job on the interior. Uh, they've gone through and renovated the kitchen and helped one of the bathrooms. That one's looking good. Uh, I've got two stations that we've gotta redo the driveways on, and that's the ones that y'all just did the quick claims on today. After we've, uh, getting the property, I can spend the money to fix them. The stations on the east side of the county, I know, Mr. Cumbers, y'all have gotten all the deeds and stuff in so that we could work on getting those over to the county's name. Is that correct?
Mr. Cummer has the list to get started on.
Does that include the station there at the power plant, so we could do the lease with them?
I have not opened the envelope yet.
Oh, okay.
I just gave it to him this morning. He'll look at it, though.
No, no problem, Joe. Just, just checking. That's one we'll have to do. Uh, Power Plant don't wanna let the property go, but they wanna lease it to us. I think it's a dollar a year.
Yeah.
Barry said he'd pay that, so that's, that'll be good.
I wonder if you put a skateboard ramp out there?
I told you I'd pay to watch. I'll pay your dollar if you'll skate. I love that. Uh, if you've been up fifty-seven, you can see they've started on the new EOC. The groundwork's coming along pretty good. I think, if I'm not wrong, I think it wasn't quite as wet as what they thought it was gonna be, the ground.
Yeah, yeah, that's what they said. Uh, they, I mean, we, we expected it to be real wet, but I think they thought it was a little bit drier than what they were expecting. So, but they have found a good number of stumps and logs in the ground there from the previous clearing that they're, uh, digging out and filling back in. But I think so far, I hadn't been told that they're gonna, like, go over the estimated quantity for fill that they needed for it. So, and yeah, the, uh, timber piles be going in very soon for it, once, once the pad is built. I think it's, it's not officially set yet, but it's looking like March twenty-fifth may be the groundbreaking ceremony for the EOC project. Um, MDA folks will be down that day already, um, and they're, who are supplying the CDBG funding for that project. Uh, so we're still working with Monica Cooper to get that scheduled, but I think we're gonna try to get that date nailed down in the next day or two.
Okay.
Matt's been a really big help. He does some, all of our projects that we have going, and I really appreciate y'all. Thank you, Brian, for letting him work with us.
So, uh, reference to the new EOC. So, basically, all the first responders, everybody that's gonna be working, uh, a hurricane or something, would be at, at the new facility, correct?
Yeah, so that facility is being built to the three sixty-one standards.
Yeah.
Which is the hurricane standards, two-hundred mile an hour winds. And that's why we built that. It's gonna be just like our current operations floor with the EOC, except a little bigger. The cities will send their representatives of the state, federal government, us, uh, we got a place for y'all to meet in there.
So, if we do that, then that kinda, you know, the Fountain Blue Community Center was built for public safety in the case of a, uh, for them to be able to stage at.
Right.
So, what I'd like to do, if we could for the future, is take the Fountain Blue Community Center and turn it into a, a hurricane shelter. I know we'd have a limited...
I think it's built, uh, three, when they built the three sixty-one also?
I think so. Yeah, yeah, I'm pretty sure.
I can't remember.
Yeah, but what I'd like to do for the future...
Oh, yeah.
Is, is, once we get the EOC building built, and that building's not needed for public safety to stage at anymore, they'll be staging at the new building. And I'd like to look at turning that one in. I know we can't hold that many people, but whatever we could hold would be great.
Well, you know, shelters are last resort, and we have people waiting to the last minute that'd like to shelter. And once you start trying to shelter in the roads o'clock, that would be an excellent area, especially with the growth you're seeing down on the St. Andrews, uh, Gulf Park State area, 'cause that would be really good for them.
Yeah.
And another thing is, once we get the building, the new EOC built, it's gonna have a training room in it. So, the training building that we're currently using there on Fifty-seven, just north of the St. Martin Commu, not St. Martin, uh, Fountain Blue Community Center, uh, that can revert back to the county that y'all can use after something else.
So, so let's keep that in mind for the future, for that, for that Fountain Blue Community Center. We'll, we'll use it for a shelter, and, uh, uh, once we get the EOC building built, yeah.
That's an excellent idea. Uh, my mind just got off track here. Uh, Chevron reached out to Terry Jackson last week, and he talked to myself and Mr. Cumbers about it, and they were asking about if the county was still interested in doing a, uh, fire station where, uh, Chevron Drive runs into Bible-Cumbus Road. Uh, they're talking about, not donating anything, but talking about either leasing us an acre or two, or the county buying an acre or two in that area. Uh, I told them I would ask y'all if y'all wanted to talk, me to talk to them any further about that, or have them come here. I've got my own thoughts on that, to build a station there. You're looking at a million and a half at least to build a fire station in that area. I think there might be another way to do that that would be cheaper than having to build a station and buy the property. Uh, we'd have to enter into an agreement with Moss Point, and we could run a truck out of their Creo Fire Station if they were amiable to that, and it would fit our needs, and we wouldn't have to spend a million and a half by building a station, then whatever it costs to buy the property. That's just something to look at, something to think about. I'd have to give a supervisor remorse on that, and get with the city, and get back with y'all and see if we could entertain something like that.
So, the, the part of the Bayou Casade Port, that's in the unincorporated part of the county, that's not in the city, do we provide fire protection for that?
Yes.
Or do we have an MOU?
There is no MOU.
Okay.
We provide fire protection. Now, we'll, now, for mutual aid, obviously, Pascua and Moss Point would help us. But, uh, we provide the fire protection with that, and that would put us closer. Because right now, we're either coming from Forts Lake or from Escatawa to provide the fire protection out there.
So, if the port expands some more, uh, and we end up picking up some more buildings and, and other spots out there, it, it, we probably would need to look at building a fire station out there for the future.
You would.
If we've got that much area to, to...
I don't see a lot of residential growth south of Ninety, but I do see commercial and industrial.
It's, yeah, no, we, we've got some potential.
Yeah. So, as you get into a different thing with the residential, with the insurance rating on what they do, and not so much what we'd be doing, the industrial stuff.
Yeah. So, it probably would be to our advantage, you, you know, to look at that, I would think.
Yeah, it probably will.
Yeah.
Yep.
Our port director, is he here? Yeah, no? So, he's probably gonna agree with that too, to where we would have more protection for the port.
I agree with that. It, that's a, kind of a blank area for us, just long distance.
Just don't ask for a fire boot.
We got three.
But, but I'm talking about a big one.
Oh, no, we, no, these have got little, small boats that got pumps on them. But that's kinda where everything is, and that's where things are going. Uh, I brought Ryan with me this morning. Stand up wave, Ryan. Come on. You wanted to come over. Let him see ya. That's where we are. And we had our first meeting with the Shelter Task Force Supervisor. Taylor was there with us. Uh, he may have a different opinion on how things went, but I thought they went pretty well for the first meeting. Cities are trying to decide what they're gonna, what they want.
I thought it went very well. Paige is committed to send information from how the Red Cross manual works, and that's to go out to the cities and everyone at the meeting. And then, it'll reconvene next month and, uh, talk about cold weather shelters.
That's kinda where we are.
All right.
All right.
Earl, we appreciate it.
Take care.
Thanks a lot.
Make sure you wear a helmet.
I will. All right, next up, there's some painting appeals that are not due until ten o'clock, so we'll skip over and come back. Uh, presentations. Mr. Dalton, you wanna come on? Miss Todd, I knew you were here somewhere.
Always coming up. Looking for money.
He can speak, as long as it ain't gonna cost us money.
That's right.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir.
If you would, turn to page five. Uh, this is the renewal for the major policy is all our liability coverages, public officials' liability, auto liability, general liability.
Attorney liability.
Attorney liability. His liability as well. Uh, yes, his department is the most costly part of this policy, by the way. I thought I just thought of it. Uh, this renews at four oh one, okay? Uh, if you would, turn to page five. This is your team that services your account from top to bottom. Everyone on this team is, uh, actually, I'm out of Pascagoula, Laurie is out of Pascagoula, Sarah's in Pascagoula, Renee King is your claims specialist. She kinda is a conduit for any claims that we have to get away from us. Uh, she's over in Gulfport. Donald McDowell is in Gulfport, but he's all, all over the place. He, he is the one that helps with our safety training, specifically on our work comp site, okay? And then, he has, uh, a gentleman named Harland Lane that lives here in Pascagoula that, that also supports him. Uh, Lisa Butler, Robin De Giacomo, and Cy Easterling, they're the ones that handle your health insurance, okay? For the county, our employees, okay? So, uh, turn to page six, and we'll just jump right in, okay? We, last year, we were with Masset. We're going to be with Masset again this year. As you can see, the renewal was fairly favorable. We're up, what, on three hundred and forty-five thousand? We're up, what, three eighty, three twenty plus two hundred and three, so five hundred dollars on three hundred and forty-three thousand dollars. So, I, I thought it was a fair renewal. Uh, like I said, it covers liability, sexual abuse, auto liability, public officials, employment practices as discrimination, sexual harassment, wrongful termination, those types of things. Employee benefits, liability, crime, it has cyber built into it, and then workplace violence coverage. Workplace violence is, it would be counseling if we had an event happen here, right? No bodily inj, it doesn't pay for bodily injury to people, but it pays for their counseling, if there's counseling, uh, due to that. We currently carry on our general liability, our law enforcement liability, and our auto liability, a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar per claim deductible. So, there's what, what would be known as a large deductible, okay? The public officials' liability and the EPL, right? Public officials is y'all. EPL is gonna be the, uh, discrimination, sexual harassment, wrongful termination we spoke about. Uh, we also have a small policy that you'll see there in, in the company column. It says auto fizz dam. FEMA requires us to carry a hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars worth of, to insure, a hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars worth of our cars. They don't care what car. They spent a hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars in Katrina, so they said you've got to, right? All the vehicles they spent money on are no longer around. That was two thousand and five. So, they still make us keep that up to speed, all right? You also have a small marine general liability. That's for any of our watercraft that we have, okay? Uh, you'll see that fifty-six hundred on the far column is an estimate. That actually came back in since the time we printed this. That's gonna be fifty-two hundred and fifty. So, the total amount that'll need to be approved today would be three sixty-eight, six twenty-four, eleven, instead of the nine seventy-four, eleven. Uh, the hull protection and indemnity, uh, the hull protection is, uh, that's, that's auto fizz dam for a boat, okay? It's comp and collision for a boat. The hull and, the protection and indemnity is if we hurt, if we, if we tear up something if somebody else is with our boat, okay? It does not have a large deductible like our auto liability does, all right? It's about twelve thousand, four ninety-two. And then, we have an inland marine coverage that's gonna handle a lot of our contractors-type equipment, and not a ton of stuff in there. And that's pretty much it for this renewal. Anybody have any questions? Comments?
I've got one. I mean, you and I have talked a good dip. Um, the, the, the largest part of this is the, um, is the, uh, liability coverage part. How, how much would that vary if we did not have any claims, say, this year, that touched that, that, uh, excess of two fifty? I mean, we had to settle some. We had to, had to settle some cases. Um, most of them come from, uh, unfortunate incidents that may happen, but...
Sure. Uh, I would, I don't know how to really quantify it for you, Mr. Cummer. Uh, what I can get close to, or ballpark, and I think we've run through this exercise before, if we, if we didn't have an in-house legal department, and we did, we weren't able to take on, uh, the large deductibles like we can for county, for, say, any other county, Stone, George Green, any of those, uh, this three hundred and forty-something thousand dollars would be closer to two million dollars? Right? Because we're such a large county. So, this, this helps us, these large deductibles help keep these premiums way, way down. I remember we did that analysis maybe two or three years ago, uh, but I would say somewhere between one point seven-five and two million would be what that price tag would be, if we didn't do the large deductibles. Uh, and they take into consideration that, because with tort reform, we, if we got the first two fifty, then their only exposure was the second two fifty, right?
Right.
So, there is a limit, and then, on the ones that have a hundred, we have, we have the first hundred, and they only exposed to four hundred. And actually, I think, on the liability piece, they buy reinsurance at four hundred, okay? So, they're really on the hook, three hundred and one fifty, I think.
Yeah.
Okay?
Well, we always try to make sure that we do not have to, uh, go over that two fifty, but sometimes, you know, you get involved. Mr. Cumbers was with me, but get involved in some cases where you just...
It becomes quagmire, and you can't...
It just gets tough, yeah.
Can't stop that bleeding. Absolutely.
Hey, Todd, where are we on our experience rating on the workers' comp now? Where are we at?
Well, I forget where we were at the, I'll have a report on that at, uh, June when we do the mid-year...
Okay.
Claims review.
All right.
Uh, you know, and I think I shared with you individually, going back to Cy Easterling and that group, uh, when we switched over to the new pharmacy benefit manager, has nothing to do with this, but on the employee benefits, uh, the reports in on the savings on that piece for the first two months, and that's about a hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars over what you, if we'd have stayed where we were on that pharmacy benefit, uh, last year over that. It reduced our spend on those two months on those same drugs by about a hundred and sixty-eight thousand. So, I'm proud of the work that Cy and those folks have done over there. So, right now, it's looking good.
All right.
Anybody else have any questions for Todd? Uh, we need a motion on this, don't we, Todd?
Yes, sir.
I'll make a motion.
Okay. I have a motion by Mr. Bossard, and a second by Mr. Taylor. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Repose, no. Thank you a lot, Todd.
Mr. Cumbers, I'll get you the, uh, documents for you to sign as to your question.
Sounds good.
All right, y'all have a great day.
You too.
When you forward that document, just copy me, so...
What, what he needs to sign?
Right.
I can, I got a hard copy, if you want. I kinda have it like ready.
Proper order to, to go along with it. Yeah, okay, good deal. Thank you.
Thanks a lot.
All right, thank you.
Next up, we have the introduction of the new Regional DHS Director, Ms. Ziva Fox. Is Latisha Johnson here? Okay, I thought that was you. Come on up. Y'all doing all right this morning?
Yes, sir.
Good.
Good morning. We just came this morning, wanted to introduce, um, as you all know, Ms. Johnson, the County Director. This is Ms. Ziva Fox. She is my boss. She's the Regional Director for the Department of Human Services. Um, she's for Region Eight. She services George, Jackson, Harrison, Hancock, Stone, and Pearl River Counties.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
你是 stretched out?
Yes.
Yeah?
She is. She is, uh, she, she lives in Pascagoula. She's been with the agency for over thirty years, and, um, she's a graduate of Moss Point High, class of eighty-two? Eighty-three. So, she is from the area, and we appreciate everything y'all do for Jackson County.
Well, good. We appreciate what y'all do.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
You know, it goes unnoticed a lot, what y'all do. You know, it goes unnoticed a lot, what y'all do, a good job. Yeah, you do.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, y'all have a great day.
Y'all too.
Thank you, nice to meet you.
Nice meeting you guys.
Action items. Mr. Fulton, you have anything?
Couple of quick things. We're nearing the end of the session, as you all know, and, uh, seems like we've been playing a lot of defense this year on a lot of bills that were not favorable to Jackson County, and I think at, at this time, most of those are, are not alive anymore. We are still reminding our delegation of the funding requests that we have, including the tidelands and the Gomasa projects that we've, we've all talked about. Uh, on the federal side, uh, we are working on information for, uh, a couple of earmarks, and we talked about those last time. One is at the airport with the terminal project, and the other is a bridge project at Tanner Williams Road. And so, we're working on that, looking at possibly making a DC trip in May. They're on recess for most of the month of April, uh, but it looks like there may be some, some time in May that we can get up there and talk to our, our folks. So, that's all I have.
Okay. Thanks a lot, Mr. Fulton. Supervisor items, I didn't have anything. Mr. Morris, did you have anything?
I didn't have anything.
Mr. Taylor, I believe you have something.
Yes, sir, I do. I have a resolution appointing Susan Stokowski to the La Pointe Krebs Foundation Board.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Mr. Taylor, and a second by Mr. Bossard. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Uh, Mr. Ross, you didn't have anything, nor Mr. Bossard. All right, that brings us down to executive session, where we have ten minutes before we can do the planning appeals. Let's just take a quick break for ten minutes, and come back at ten o'clock for the planning appeals.
All right.
There he is. All right, it's ten o'clock, we'll call a meeting back to order. First up, this morning is a rezon appeal. Mr. Marcus, we'll give it to you.
Okay. On January the fifteenth, the Planning Commission heard the application RZON one-one dash twenty twenty-four dash zero zero one six nine six nine for a zone change from R one, single-family residential to C two, community commercial. The property is just under an acre in size, it's point zero nine acres in size. It's not located in flood zone. Of course, the applicant stated that there were both commercial and residential properties in the immediate area. And the applicant also stated that their, this property faces Washington Avenue and is not part of Gulf Hills subdivision. So, the other houses in Gulf Hills subdivision, you access them from Ridge Road, this one you access from Washington Avenue. We had several people that showed up in opposition to this. And of course, the Planning Commission didn't feel that they met the zone change criteria. So, they denied the request four to three. And I believe Ms. Nguyen is here to represent this application. Natalie Nguyen.
Is Ms. Nguyen here?
She's got, she's coming up.
Okay.
Let me try to pull you an area load. Let me find the zoning map. You have printed copy, it was on the map.
I've got some supporting documentation, I printed seven copies.
You can lay me that down, sure.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Hi, yes, my name is Kim Nguyen. My address is sixty-two thirteen Rebecca Cove. This is Ms. Natalie Nguyen here, she is the property owner. I'm actually a licensed real estate agent too, and her Realtor. So, our request to rezone this property from R one to C two, the public need, what Ms. Natalie plans or her intent is to maybe convert it over to office suites or retail spaces and rent the spaces out. There's actually a property down the street that's located on Hugh Seymour Road that, you know, converted it to something similar, and they've actually rented almost all those spaces out already. And so, obviously, there is a public need for this type of business in the area. And so, inside the folder, we actually included a map of the current zoning in the area. Majority of the property north of Ms. Natalie's property is already zoned for commercial use, and obviously directly across the street is Zone C one. Since the last hearing, the property right next door to Ms. Natalie's is a one-point-three-seven acre lot, has been sold. That is already zoned commercial. We reached out to the listing agent and asked what the buyer's intent is for that piece of lot, and they stated that they're going to be converting it over to a retail strip center. And that's located directly right next to where Ms. Natalie's property is now. Also, I think most of the public concern last time was that some of the property owners that live in Gulf Hills stated that they were concerned about by this property being rezoned to commercial, that it potentially would devalue the cost of their homes. And so, we did some additional research, and we supplied evidence that in the last fifteen months, there have been thirty-eight homes in Gulf Hills that have sold, either at or above market value. And so, we know, and those are all up against the commercial properties facing Washington as well, so. And then, I also included some traffic data inside the package there. Washington alone, it daily sees about thirty-five thousand vehicles per day. And then, I also included the traffic for I-ten, which I think is roughly around, I think seventy-something thousand. So, just Washington alone, you see half of that amount of traffic already, and then obviously Highway ninety is about forty-three thousand vehicles that pass daily. Her property faces Washington, only has one access point, and that's through Washington. Obviously, if it remains as a residential property, we have, you know, if the person who lives there, she has a young grandchild, you know, who's ten years old, think about school buses having to stop in the middle of Washington Avenue and drop off kids, and, you know, it's just a safety concern. And so, that's the reason why we're hoping that we can convert it over to commercial use, and she could put that property to good use versus remaining as a residential property.
Okay. Okay, anybody have any questions for this zone? Okay. Is there anyone else here to speak for this? Okay. Do you have anything else you want to say, Detective? You'll have a chance to come back up too, so.
Okay, yes, sir.
Okay.
Yeah, and I mean, do you guys have any questions for us that we can possibly answer?
Go ahead.
I do have a question.
Sure.
So, are you currently operating a business there?
No, it is not, it is a residential property.
Okay.
Yeah.
When I, when I went by there and looked at it, there's two commercial hood vents coming out of the residential house there.
Yeah, so when she initially purchased this property back in twenty-twenty-one, she had intentions of running a hibachi catering business out of the property. That structure was already on the property when she purchased it. All she did was went in and renovated it as a commercial kitchen, but she never ever used it. It's not even completed yet. If you go inside and take a look at it, the commercial kitchen's not even done yet.
Okay.
Yeah. So, she had intentions of converting it over, but now she thinks that it's more best served as a retail or strip center, but really retail or office use is really what she wants to do with it, yeah.
Okay. All right, very good.
Yes, sir.
But thank you, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
All right, is there anyone here to speak against this appeal? You can come on up. I saw her first, you'll be next, just hold on a minute. When you get up, just state your name and your address, please.
I'm Joellen McLean. I live at fifty-eight oh-four Ridge Road, which is a property right next to the property that they want to make commercial. My fence is fifteen, twelve feet from my home, and that would mean that the business would be twelve feet from my kitchen and my living room windows there. But let me give you a little background about my place that I'm at. First, the home that she wants to commercialize belonged to my husband's great-grandmother. They purchased it, that property, in nineteen twenty-five, I believe, from the Branigan Brothers. And they built home there, and nineteen forty-four, my, my husband's uncle moved in to take care of his grandmother. So, they've been living there for all those years. And when he got sick, his wife, after he passed away, his wife sold the property to Danny Carter, who he tried to make this property commercial, and by the Jackson County Planning Department, and they denied it. And so, it wasn't long, he sold it to Natalie. Natalie purchased the property, I think, in November of twenty-one, and by March of twenty-two, the vents were up, they have trucks, and I've got pictures of all, do I give these pictures to you? I've got pictures, those pictures show the progression of how close my home is. They're still staging all of their equipment for this hibachi business over there. Now, they have rented it as a rental, it just recently was rented as a rental, but it's not now. They do use it as Airbnb on a regular basis. This past weekend, someone was over there, every weekend, someone's there. But now, with that being stated, my place is right next door. My mother-in-law bought this land in nineteen fifty-seven, built a home for her family. It was a wood frame house. So, when she got sick and passed away, my brother-in-law, Tommy Broadnax, found out my husband had cancer. And three days before my husband passed away, Tommy promised him that he would build the home that we had planned to build, we had the plans already drawn up, and would plan to build our forever home. And of course, he passed away eight years ago next month, and Tommy told him three days before he died that he would take care of me, and he would build my forever home, that I would be safe in this area, because it is such a safe neighborhood. But with that being said, if I have something commercial next to me, do I really feel safe in my, my older age, by myself, living alone? But when we built my home, every step of the way, I think his name is Luke Brennan, your guy that works for the county that does the evaluations or whatever he does to homes, he came for every step of our building and made sure that all of it was done. And I am just asking you to please take into consideration my home that I don't plan to leave, that I'll be there till I, my demise. My neighbors across the road, behind, on the other side, we all have, it's not so much an investment, we don't want to sell. We want to keep our places, but we want to keep them in a, in a safe zone with, you know, and I understand that Washington has buildings on it, but it has to stop at some point. And Natalie bought this property as residential, and I think it should stay as such. And thank you for your time and effort.
Thank you a lot. Appreciate you. Would you come back, please, and explain the pictures? The first picture is?
The first picture is, I think that's the one that they parked the truck out on Highway six oh-nine and left it there for quite some time. What's the next picture?
What is the street, is that Washington?
That's on Washington.
That is Washington?
There's a wooden fence there, and there's like a, I guess it's a state, state-owned strip of land there, up to the fences.
City right-of-way, yeah, or state?
Yeah.
And what does that truck say?
It says Hurley Hibachi.
Okay.
And that is parked usually right at my, that fence is right at my window there.
But we just heard that there is not a commercial activity going on in the home, are you saying there is?
I'm saying that they park all of their vehicles out there. All of their supplies and equipment is there on a regular basis.
Okay, the second picture shows the vent that we were talking about earlier.
Right, right. They're not small vents, they're pretty large vents.
Okay. And the third picture is a pickup truck pulling a smaller trailer that says?
Right, they come in and they park it there, and then when they have business, I'm assuming that they just come get the truck from there and move it, and it's there quite often. And the trailer in the back of that, I think, has supplies in it as well. There's a trailer in the background, baby, is that the picture?
Yes.
Yeah, and you can see like a hibachi table up against the fence or something.
Okay. Now, where is that picture taken from?
It's from my porch.
Okay, so it's from your property?
Yes, sir.
Okay, next door?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
This lot is less than, the one they're talking about rezoning is less than an acre, right?
Right, it's point nine or something.
And it's got a big, couple of big live oaks there, right there in the front, so there's not a whole lot of space to do much.
Right, right, there's not much, because when six oh-nine went through in nineteen eighty-three or whatever it was, we had to give up part of our front yard. And my old house was right up against the fence, so I could touch the fence, I could touch the house, I mean, it was that close. And of course, Kurt, the property end question there, they lost part of their front, they had a whole pile of azaleas and whatnot as a blocker, all of that's gone. So, there's not much front yard there. What is there, I think they have concreted, I think Kurt had all of it concreted.
Okay.
But not much front yard there.
Okay. Any more questions, anyone, Mr. Taylor?
Is it, well, is it significant that there is a truck there that suggests there's some commercial activity going on? Is, is, is that kind of an overriding issue here?
Marcus?
Yes, sir.
Have y'all investigated to determine yes or no?
We have, we've looked at it, and I believe that's Ms. Nguyen's ex-husband, when he was living at the place, of course, he's not there anymore, so.
I don't believe he ever lived there, Marcus.
Somehow, he had something to do with it, but Ms. Nguyen says he don't have anything to do with it anymore, and they're not using the house for that activity. We never could prove it, because, you know, all we saw was hood vents like everybody else saw them, but we didn't see any kind of activity every time we'd go out.
I know they were there, I think it was Thursday or Friday, they were both there.
So, where, where did you, when you take, when you took the picture with the hood vents, can you see that from your yard?
I can, yeah.
Okay. Any more comments, anybody? Okay, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, I appreciate your time.
You come on up, you had your hand up, didn't you? Yes, sir, come on.
I'm Colonel Robert Lewis at fifty-eight thirty-two Ridge Road in Gulf Hills. The interpreter that's here for bond you in is a Realtor. And any Realtor can pull up those maps on the internet. And we, so every, I can do it at home, you can do it at home, anyone can. The issue here is real simple. She came in and bought residential properly knowingly, she had a Realtor, the Realtor was standing right here, told you she was a Realtor. So, they knew they were buying residential property, which they immediately attempted to turn into commercial property. So, the issue is here, in my way of thinking, if that's what they wanted to do, they should have requested the change before they bought the property, not after the fact. I can understand she might have confusion. In this country, since the time of the pilgrims, you could establish a commercial business, a tavern, but you couldn't put the tavern across the street from a church or a school. And you can go from any place in America, and it's pretty much the same. We understand codes, and we understand the restrictions. I worked at the embassy in Saigon. I have three years in Vietnam. And I can tell you that their view is quite different. Building is a free-for-all zone, you go wherever you want. How do you get, how one gets permission to build wherever they want in Vietnam is subject to two considerations. Here, it's subject to the laws in the zoning that you've established. There, it's established by two things. You can attempt to pay off the authorities for them to rule in your favor. Or, if that doesn't work, as it doesn't here, you can pester them to death. And I'm here to tell you that what you're being subjected to is the latter, the pestering. If we just continue to pester and appeal, eventually, you'll get tired of it and say, okay, that's in their tradition. What I'm saying, as a homeowner there in Ridge Road, and my property is nineteen twenty-three, same, same age as this one, one of the, one of the original things here. We are all affected by encroaching, were commercialization to encroach. The Realtor said, well, the property values went up, but we don't know if they went up less than they otherwise would have, we can't, we can't know that. We just know in general that those codes are protection, and that when we bought our properties, we did so with the expectation that they would remain, that we would remain in that residential area. And this is an encroachment on that understanding. So, I would just say, don't be pestered, don't be pestered to death by this. Thank you very much.
Hey, what branch of service?
I'm a Marine officer, and I was the Marine Security Officer in, for the embassy. The Marine Corps loaned me to the State Department, and I worked for two years in Asia as the Marine Security Officer at all the, at all the embassies there. And I am the last Marine Officer in ICOR.
Okay.
I closed down all the, all the consulates there. So, I do, I do have experience on building codes in Vietnam.
Yeah, sure, I just, thank you for your service.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir. There's anyone else here to speak against this? Come on forward. Tommy, I saw the fella behind you first, let me get him, then you'll be next, Tommy. Give us your name and address, please.
Yes, sir. I'm Jeremy Dehart, I live at five-eight-one-two Ridge Road, so two houses down from Ms. McLean. So, I have similar concerns to what they've discussed up here. Specifically, you know, we talked about property values a little bit, but privacy and security concerns, to be honest. I've got a two-bedroom house that looks directly down in that property, so two houses down, basically catty-cornered from that property. I wrote a letter for the initial hearing, I wasn't able to make that one, so I think it's been resubmitted for this. But there's a picture I included in that as well. And I've got a two-story house, my entire backside of my house faces this property, and there's, there's no buffer, there's no privacy there whatsoever. And so, of course, when I bought my house four years ago, with every expectation of the privacy comfort of a residential community, and so, to have what is basically my backyard and the closest portion of my house, that's my kid's bedroom on the second story, and it looks right down into the back of this property. And so, the thought that they may turn it into whatever, you know, commercial entity wants to do with it, you know, they may have, you know, ideas about it being an office building or something, but my concern is this would open the door to whatever commercial entity wanted to purchase it, maybe that's not what they wanted to do, tear down the structure, build a strip mall or a liquor store or something, and now that's what my kid's bedroom looks, looks towards. So, again, I bought my house four years ago, the house is, was built in nineteen seventy-six, you know, it's almost fifty years old, and again, with the idea that this is a residential community, and so, everyone here is homeowners, I just ask that you consider, consider all these for your decision.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, thank you for your time.
Mr. Broadnax, come on up. Give, give your name and address, Tommy.
Tommy Broadnax, one-five-six-two-four Ramsey Lane, Van Cleve, Mississippi, three-nine-five-six-five.
Thank you, Mr. Broadnax.
Light of my community. Gentlemen, if there's anybody in here that knows anything about Washington Avenue, you're looking at him, because I'm the man that spearheaded the improvement in Washington Avenue from the railroad tracks in Ocean Springs past the interstate. I was a project director on that whole project, worked a year and a half on it. If anybody knows anything about how it was zoned and what's there, you're looking at it. Now, as far as this property, they bought as a residential lot, a place, when they got there in nineteen, in twenty-one, they purchased it in twenty-one, they immediately started building this commercial kitchen, all right? They've, they got big galore hoods in there, big gas stoves, got butane tanks outside. They probably spent twenty, thirty thousand building this. Total disregard for our zoning law, total, ignored it. I talked to some of the people working on it, and they said, hey, they're not worried, they're gonna, they're gonna operate their business there. That was feedback to me. But anyhow, as y'all know, y'all govern the county, y'all, y'all have executive legislative and judicial power. And after Camille, we of the county was mandated by the federal government to adopt zoning laws. And during my tenure on this board, we, we seen to it that they were abiding by. And when somebody ignored them, then we never would approve it. But anyhow, if you get up here and submit false information, I seen last, last week, I mean, two weeks ago, I said, here y'all had about your development in Gochet, that y'all not asleep, you got one of the best lawyers in the country right there. And y'all, y'all really did a good job, and I appreciate anything you can do to leave that, that property as a residential. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Broadnax. Is there anyone else here to speak against it? Okay. Ms. Nguyen, you will have a chance to rebuttal, if you would like to come back up and say anything.
Yes, sir. So, they mentioned in twenty-twenty-one, she purchased the property as a residential property. At the time, I don't believe you have Realtor representation, right? You bought it as a for sale by owner? And the owner told her that that area, and I get it, right, sellers can, can say that, that that area had a high chance of redevelopment for commercial, because a lot of it was already rezoned for commercial. And so, like we mentioned, when she purchased the home, that structure was already on the property, so she did not think to make sure that that structure was already permitted. property, so she did not think to make sure that that structure was already permitted. And so when she went in to, you know, build the commercial kitchen, and like we said, it's not even done. If you guys want to come and inspect it, you can see that it's in progress and that it's never even been used. And so there isn't, she did have intentions of running a habachi business out of it, but it never got up and running. And I mean, it's her property, so as far as parking some of those vehicles on the property, I don't see any harm in that. I mean, again, it was, she intentionally was purchasing the property and was going to do that, but never did. And so, you know, you got to take also into consideration, I know they're saying that they're looking in their backyard and they're going to see a building and structure there, but the property right next door to her is actually being developed into a retail strip center as well. So if she ends up moving into this property, living into it permanently, she's going to have to view what's next door to her as well. I understand that they're saying at some point you got to draw the line, but why does the line have to stop at Ms. Natalie's property and not beyond that point? I mean, I know there's always been discussion of possibly commercializing all of Washington because a good bit of it has already been commercialized. But, I mean, Ms. Natalie, did you want to add anything?
Yes, they're talking about Habachi truck parking. That was like years ago. That is my boyfriend, and he just parked and he tried to excuse me. He's got to maybe get some business. We were right up and down, but then for a couple of times, he never parked there forever. But they keep mentioning about that all the time. But like I said, our property, we allowed to park our little trailer there and here. I don't think that's the problem. You know, that's what, that was it. And at first, I tried to buy that property because I think the move is there, so he can have the, on the boat, they call messy entry with boat, the catering. So he's trying to make that illegally. That was the building was there. So he just put on some new boots up there, but we failed that business because we have no longer that business, so we didn't ever get to move in. And plus, the traffic is so bad, and I have a 10-years-old grandson, I won't be able to live there. And I have high mortgage. I cannot be able to sell for residential because I lost a lot of money out there. And people don't want to buy residential because that was the traffic road. So that way, right now, if I cannot turn a mortgage, I don't know what to do with that. I don't know how to make my mortgage to pay for them. And they're not, they're already clear now for people in street mall, whatever she just said. I'm so sorry that I don't speak English very good, so that's why she always speaking for me. I understand more than what I'm speaking. Thank you.
Let me ask you something. What's the total under-roof square footage? Do you know, count the garage?
I think it's 3,060 square feet.
That's what I thought, was about 3,000.
Yes, sir. So there is, so in addition to the, you know, it's under acre lot, but there's a 3,000-square-foot structure that's on there. And that's the space that she could potentially convert over and maybe just break it up into like six office spaces that she could potentially rent out. And then we would just need to kind of pour concrete, you know, get permits for that to drive some kind of driveway.
Honestly, don't think, Marcus, you can chime in on this, but I don't think she has enough square footage to meet the parking requirements for the existing structure.
Yeah, it just depends on what the occupancy would be for the commercial use.
So I don't, just by looking at the photos, even if it was commercial with the existing building, I don't, I don't think there's enough property left to even put the parking that's required by the current zoning.
I see. Yeah, the property next door, I think, is 1.37 acres right now, so it's slightly larger than hers.
Yeah. But they're having to build to the same, their building is based on parking spaces. So for every thousand square, for every hundred square feet of area, you have to have a parking space.
Gotcha.
Commercially.
Yeah.
So I don't, I don't think you, I don't think you even got enough property left to even provide parking as per the current zoning for this type zoning you're asking for.
Yeah. Yeah, that's something that we would obviously have to look into. I mean, if she were to, you know, reduce the size of that space or something to be able to allocate more parking to meet the requirements. Those are some things that we would obviously look into to make sure, yeah, to see if it's possible.
Do you have anything else you'd like to add?
Well, I think that's it. Thank you for your time. We appreciate it.
Thank you, ma'am.
Marcus, can we attach these as exhibits? These need to be part of the record. Yeah, whatever.
They were submitted last, the planning commission made it resubmitted.
Right. Whatever was submitted to the planning commission is before the board anyway, but these new documents need to be noted as exhibits in the hearing. I just want to mention to the board, just remember that on these zone changes, the applicant has to prove, has the burden of proof proven by clear and convincing evidence that the character of the neighborhood has changed to such an extent to justify, and there's a public need. And as long as you're not arbitrary in your, in your classification of what the neighborhood is, this board has latitude to define the neighborhood. There's a case that came out of the court appeals, the Supreme Court that said that. So I think you need to look at what has been proposed and say, "Okay, what is the neighborhood? And has that neighborhood changed?" And then the public need to change it, not necessarily for what she proposes, but if it were to be rezoned, anything, Marcus, correct me if I'm wrong, anything that would be allowed within the rezoned classification can go there.
That's correct. Anything that C2 allows, which like the guy spoke earlier, a liquor store could ultimately go there at some point. The planning commission felt that a public need had not been met, and it hadn't been met on that. That was the reason for denial.
I respect the folks that come in and want to develop things and be entrepreneurial. I'm all for it. This is one of those properties that falls in that middle ground where you're like, is this the point where we say the neighborhood needs to be protected? Or is this the point where we need to favor the person trying to do something with their own property? And I think because of where it is and the growth we're seeing across the county in different areas and people being worried about losing the hometown or the county they grew up in, I think it's more important than ever for us to send a message that we're here to protect it. And we're here to preserve the people and make sure that they get what they moved into and get to stay in the type of environment they grew up in for as long as we can preserve it and still have growth, but to try to balance it so people feel safe. So I'm going to make a motion to deny the change in zoning or to uphold
Uphold planning.
The planning commission decision to deny that.
I'll second that.
I have a motion by Mr. Ross and a second by Mr. Bozore. If all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Okay. That has been denied. What's the next one we have, Marcus?
The next one we have is SPEC 11-2024-0016. This was an application from Thomas and Jamie Perry. The request was to allow chickens to remain on a parcel of property. The property is zoned R4, which is a high-density residential. It's a half acre in size. It's actually four lots that were combined to make a half acre in size. And the applicant's comments were that the chickens were actually therapy for his daughter and his wife, Ms. Perry. We had a couple of letters that were submitted prior to this, and of course, we had a bunch of people show up at the hearing that was against the request for the chickens to be in this area. And in a residential area, if you have an acre or more, you could have chickens. But this is a half acre of four lots that were combined in a high-density area. So we've received a lot of complaints on this one, but I believe the Perrys are here to represent this application.
Okay. Mr. and Ms. Perry, y'all here?
Yep, we're here.
Okay, come on up.
Hey, Marcus, you might want to move that tripod over, Marcus.
I'll pull up this zoning map for you. You have the exhibits I submitted with the appeal?
Everything that you submitted, it was in the packet for the board.
Okay. So they see it or is it coming up on the screen?
What do you want to see?
I have exhibits that go with what I'm going to talk to. Exhibit A, B, and B, H, and B. So if you start exhibiting.
Okay, mine are probably not in that type of order. Is this your letters?
Yeah, that's my name written.
That's what you want?
No, it's your exhibits that come after I.
If you have anything.
I got one copy. One person wants to look at it as I talk to it.
We can pass it around. Just start it over here.
It was submitted, but I brought copies.
Everything scanned into the file that the supervisors have.
I don't have any, so that's what the letter, Mary, is writing. It's just from two-page water.
Yeah, anything that you have now can be submitted and added to
Okay.
if you'll let the supervisors.
Here's the first I'm going to be talking to right there. I'll explain it as we go. Morning, I'm Thomas Perry. This is my wife, Jamie Perry. We reside at 2317 East Simmons Bayou Drive in Ocean Springs, or Gulf Park Estates. At the hearing, according to the board, the special exception for the chickens was denied because board members were under the impression the property at 2317 East Simmons Bayou Drive resides in an actual high-density population area due to the current zoning. The planning commission previously approved chickens to be allowed on a property at 8501 Highway 613 Moss Point very recently on September 4, 2024. This same commission failed to review this precedent established less than six months In comparison, the property at Moss Point that was granted a special exception was .22 of an acre. The chicken coop and run were set up directly on the fence line with the neighbor. This property, 2317 East Simmons Bayou Drive, that is requesting the current special exception is .65 of an acre, and this is based on a survey completed by Gary Durbin on November 4, 2024. There is three times the size of the property approved for chickens in Moss Point. In addition, the chicken coop at 2317 East Simmons Bayou Drive is 61 feet from the neighbor's fence line on the west and over 100 feet from their house. The coop is 233 feet from the neighbor's border to the east of the, on the east side, which is our neighbor in the east, and he didn't even know we had chickens. So if you could look at that exhibit I submitted, on the left side, that is the property in Moss Point, and then on the right side, that is the property that is requesting a special Additionally, a board member of the planning commission continuously stated, and I think we stated this morning, that the property requesting chickens resides in a high-density population area. This could not be further from the truth. Though the county incorrectly zoned the area's high-density, a vast majority of the properties are either vacant lots, homes in disrepair, or single-family residences. The only thing that's high-density in this area are trees. In comparison, the property in Moss Point that was allowed chickens has close to 50 homes, multiple apartment complexes, and multiple commercial businesses within the 500-foot cordon that the planning commission sent letters to. There are only a mere 18 single-family houses, 13 occupied, and no apartment complexes, no mobile home parks, or businesses within the 500 feet of the property that is requesting a special exception. For visual explanation here, this is Exhibit B. Want to start here? Look to the left, that's the property in Moss Point. Look to the right, that's the property that's requesting a special exception. During the planning commission meeting on 16 January, it was stated to the board members by another board member that many letters were received objecting to the allowance of the chickens. This was not true and immediately impacted the other members' decision. I've requested those letters, and there was only one. And this person lives 340 feet away from the property that is requesting these chickens. Additionally, it was stated multiple times by the same board member that Randy, the district supervisor, totally objected to the allowance of the chickens. This had a huge impact on the other board member's decision. Randy was not in person nor was anything written sent in stating such. If this, in fact, Randy's stance on the matter, by word of mouth, and it conflicts with a previous stance that he did not care either way. This conversation took place with me over the fall of November 4, 2024. The planning commission failed to take into account that these chickens are pets, they're therapy for a mother. Our son just recently passed away, and the only reason this woman got out of bed is to get up and take care of those chickens. What started out as just a thing for my daughter became something that just saved her. It kept her from just going into a dark. It was a difficult time, and it pulled her out of that. Additionally, I have a mother that lives with us who has severe dementia. These chickens help with those daily interactions, which provide stimulations not seen with any other activity. The city of Ocean Springs, which has more dense population than East Simmons Bayou Drive, allows chickens, Section 5-14, in their ordinance, and views of chickens that property owners have as pets. Please take into account the recent story regarding the chicken Carl. Everybody heard about that. When Carl was killed, the lady who committed the act was charged with a misdemeanor. Case in point, chickens are not always considered livestock and have a place as pets, just like a dog or cat would. Based on the science of grief recovery, I'm sure we could get a letter or something from a counselor stating how this is helping my wife recover. And this is absolutely helping my nine-year-old daughter recover from losing her brother. That's all I have.
Got all your hands?
All right. So let me refute your one statement there. When we talk, I tell, I told you just what I told everybody that calls me about a zoning change. If the neighbors are okay with it, I'm okay with it. And that's exactly what I said. I say that to everybody. You have to do the legwork to get the neighbors on board. That's not on me.
I understand that.
So if the neighbors are on board, then I'm on board. It's logical. It's just the way I do things, you know? But I have never told anybody that I'm against this, other than if the neighbors are for it, I would be inclined to support it. Marcus knows, that's my general answer to everybody that calls me about a zoning change.
That's great to hear.
So let's get that straight, because you've made that a public statement, and it's not fair to me.
Oh.
Because I said, "If you get the neighbors on board, then I don't have, I usually don't have a problem with it."
I have a transcript right here from our last meeting, and one of your board members got up and stated that you were totally against this, and it's in the transcript.
I've never talked to any of those.
It was Ketchout.
No, I told Mr. Ketchout there again that if the neighbors support it, then I would be inclined to support it.
I understand. I'm just saying, that's what he said. I don't know. That's just what he said. I've just, and that swayed all the, the board members seemed like they were going to maybe allow the chickens, but as soon as you said that you were against it, that pretty much swayed their decision.
I don't take a for or against. There's only, there's only one zoning request in Gulf Park Estates I took a firm against stance on, and that was the RV part from the beginning. Other than that, I always say, "If the neighbors are on board, then I'm on board."
That's great to hear. Absolutely great to hear. I'm just going on based on what they said.
Well, that's what I'm saying. I don't want to argue with you about it. That's my statement to everybody.
Well, I'll be glad to read it to you. It says here, "The supervisor of this area has called, and he said he's received tons of complaints."
Right. Correct. And I have, and I received a lot of complaints about it.
And then keep on going. He is totally against it. It's in there too.
Yeah. But like I said, if the neighbors showed up to that. Yeah, but like I said, if the neighbors showed up to that meeting and all for it, more than a majority was for it, then I usually don't have a problem.
There was, okay, there was one letter and one neighbor showed up.
I have received at least seven phone calls from different people down there. And we had this situation a year or so ago, I believe, same situation, and then we ended up having to, you know, get animal control involved and stuff like that to settle.
Do you have something, Mr. Perry?
Uh, Jamie Perry, but this situation that Keith's been brought up about a year ago, we didn't actually concern. Like, we just, that was another lady.
That was another lady. You're correct.
That was another lady, and so like all those complaints and stuff, that wasn't about us. That was about this other lady, and she had a feud with this other guy that reported us. So for, well, he actually reported us for the lady who actually knew we had chickens, and she has a beef against us that has absolutely nothing to do with chickens. It was a, um, we've been very helpful to her, and then she had like a drug episode where the ambulance had to be called, police had to be called, and so I told them what was going on and what medicines that she had taken, and then the chicken reports happened. So like she knew we had these for an entire year, and they have never been out of her yard. Her dogs go out of her yard and poop in the other neighbor's yard. She plays poker music till one o'clock in the morning all day, every day. Like, she's the most disruptive neighbor in the whole place, but you know, that has nothing to do with it, but I'm just saying this is where this is coming from. Nobody knew we had chickens. Our chickens don't get out. They don't bother anybody. They don't attack people or bite people like dogs. They don't howl through the night like dogs. And just like last night, you know, we had to listen to it all night, but you know, that's just part of being a neighbor. You have people who have dogs, and they mark, our dogs, our chickens don't hurt anybody. They don't hurt anybody. They have never been out of her yard.
Can I ask a crazy question? Um, do y'all have just roosters, or y'all got hens?
We have.
We got a rooster. He protects them. Like, we let them out to clean their pen or whatever. We do have hawks in the area, and he keeps the hawks off of them.
Okay. Okay, I just didn't know if maybe the, you know.
But we got one of those. Sorry.
I just didn't know if the rooster was the issue with it crowing first thing in the morning, is waking people up?
So she said it was flies. She was worried about flies. She supposedly had flies on the day of winter, and she was worried about getting more flies because she said we put the poop next to her fence, which we did not. We were trying to fill up a spot where her bulkhead was replaced, and they destroyed our grass over there. And so she just took it that way, but it wasn't that. But, I mean, eggs are super high. We use this for food, and you know, we give other people eggs too. And we got two roosters. They're not disruptive. They crow in the morning, which I can deal with. I'm already up with my kid for school anyways, and most people get up. But she stays up all night long and parties, and then she doesn't wanna hear it in the morning, and that's just the truth of it. And I don't wanna be ugly, but this all came about for no reason. And they don't bother anybody. They've never, ever been out of their yard. It's like they're pooping anywhere. They're not, you know, they crow in the morning, and then that's, you know, it's not a problem. Those dogs attack people. People's, the neighbor who has the junkyard, which that's so rude to me, but she has this huge junkyard, who was the only lady who wrote in that said that there's flies that could come from chickens, and she, they look at it like you're gonna allow chickens for the entire neighborhood, and the chickens are gonna run over the neighborhood. We've had these chickens, and they didn't even know, you know? And we get eggs, and we hang out with our chickens because we don't go anywhere else or do anything. It's, I'm sorry, it's just.
That's fine. Okay.
It'd be upsetting, but it's just, it's just nonsense to me, you know? Like, a couple chickens in your yard, and the lady next door has three dogs. Maybe she scoops her poop up out of her yard. She won't have flies, you know? Like, maybe it's not us. Maybe it's the fact that she replaced her bulkhead in her old yard's mud right now. You know, but we don't have flies. We don't have flies. And we keep, I keep it very clean because they aren't like kids to me, like your dog or your cat would be to you. They, we take good care of them, you know?
Okay.
There isn't a noise ordinance, and they are so much quieter than the gunshots, the fireworks, the loud music, the everything that just goes on nonstop out there. It's just.
I went around door to door and took a letter to people, and every person that I took a letter to was in support of our chickens. Every neighbor within five hundred feet, the ones that didn't have a house there, I still sent it to them for the property. And they called me personally, said they would send in a letter, write a letter, or call in support of us. I didn't get one negative thing. The only lady is the lady who lives next to us. Then I told the ambulance, tried to save her life, what happened, and then she got mad. She called Joel, our other neighbor, and got him to report it because she said that we were scaring people, and she didn't wanna do it. So I think she was just ashamed that she didn't wanna report us because we've been so helpful to her, and she didn't wanna know who did it.
Yeah.
But, yeah, that's the root for it. So we had her and the guy who reported it, and then the lady who got sent a letter, and she, so she wrote in and said she was worried about flies. That's who reported it the last time. That was who. And I don't know what calls Randy got or what's written down that somebody maybe negatively said, but every person that I spoke to said, yes, that they didn't see any problem, and they didn't know we had chickens, and they all said the problem was chickens.
Okay.
Question, how many chickens are we talking about?
Fifteen.
Do what?
Fifteen.
Fifteen, ain't it? Did you hear him?
Well, I know a couple babies are now.
Okay. Barry, Keith, you have a question?
Yeah, let me ask a question. I do not believe seriously in precedents, but I'd like to ask the planning commission, was there any consideration for the fact that within the last six months or so in Moss Point, still unincorporated Jackson County, I assume, chickens were allowed in a residential area, and if not, why not?
Well, the one that you're talking about before, the planning commission heard that application, and we're gonna have a few points on that application like we have on this one.
Okay, so you said the planning commission said we will not use what we could use as a precedent, allowing chickens in a residential area, correct?
Yes, the planning commission made that decision based on the evidence that was given that day. So I don't exactly remember the specifics to it. I remember the case, but I don't remember all the specifics to it, or why the planning commission voted like they voted, but.
Okay, didn't even come up. What we heard just now that there were really not that many objections. If that's true, then it sounds like the planning commission was slanted a little bit, and if it's true, and one thing we could do is just delay this and have a serious canvassing of the neighbors and see what they really think.
We'll see. There's folks here, I think, that wanna.
Yeah, there's folks here.
Okay, yeah. Okay, well, thank you.
And there should have been like some letters. I know they sent me copies of letters that they had sent in, some of the neighbors who couldn't come. So I don't know if he has got those, but they said that they sent letters, and they sent me copies of what they had sent, so.
You know, realistically, you probably have more neighbors in every neighborhood violating the ordinance on dogs and chains, or not chains, but being on leash.
Definitely.
You know, if we ever decided to enforce that, I don't know where we'd be.
Okay. Y'all have anything else you need to bring up, Mr. Perry?
Not at this time.
Okay.
It really is just a really country-like place. People, they're like walking, they have chickens, like you live in the country. It's not high-density. It's really not. Like, there's literally fifteen houses within five hundred feet that have people living in them, and I've spoken to every one of them, and all the two original, and the lady who wrote in. I did speak to a guy that was there, but he just said he would give you the letter. I didn't speak to her personally, so I don't know how she stands, but everybody else said that they were fine with it.
Okay, all right, very good. Is there anyone else here to speak for this application, for it? You can come on up, please, sir.
My name is Jimmy Zenick. I live at seventy-five hundred Lake Ridge Drive. Actually, I came before this board, before this ever came, before the planning commission on Jan, the first meeting in January. At that time, I had already received a couple letters saying that they were gonna have a thing on the board coming up for a chicken. I thought it was just ridiculous because we just had the meeting. I was at the meeting back in September where the couple had requested that. I said, at that time, it's putting an unnecessary expense on the citizens of Jackson County to have to appeal it to the board's, the planning commission, and then appeal it to the Board of Supervisor. I actually have two properties within five hundred feet of their house. When I went to the planning commission, I witnessed an unnecessary hardship placed on this couple because of this chicken ordinance that we have in the county. I don't know why our county ordinance could not mirror the city ordinance. I personally visited the location of, to check for bugs, smells, or other offensive odors, to which I found none, you know? Yet I believe you, Mr. Cumbus, had said, well, there could be bugs, or there, that was your comment. And I went to see if there was anything that I did not witness.
I haven't made that comment.
Well, at the January, at the, at the first meeting, this was before ever went to any of the planning commission and all, but the nearest home, you know, like I said, it's sixty-some feet, and they gave, they granted the special exception up there on six thirteen. So I said, hey, it looks like why would we be wasting the county time and money and the citizens having to pay for the expense of appealing it to the board? Why can't we just mirror the ordinance with the city of Ocean Springs? In conclusion, we didn't have a very long devotion this morning. In church, we've been studying Mark about Peter denying. Well, in Mark fourteen sixty-eight, but he denied it, saying, I neither know nor understand what you mean. And he went into the gateway, and the rooster crowed. Does this board have the power to crucify this couple who are doing no harm and improving the area?
All right, thank you. I believe there was something, yeah, come on up.
My name is Tom Dolinsky, and I live at twenty-three twenty-seven East Simmons Bayou Drive. I live on the property directly east of the henhouse owner. Well, actually, there's a property, a vacant lot between us, but my neighbor that has the henhouse owns that property. I recently talked to the ninety-five-year-old woman that lives on the beginning of the street, and her daughter, and they were talking about back in the day when she had a horse, a henhouse, and ducks on the property. Now, I never knew my neighbor even had chickens until he told me. And I haven't, I had a neighbor who recently moved out directly across the street from me who had a henhouse, and I never knew she did until she brought me a dozen eggs one day. Now, there's forty to fifty feet upstream behind all the property on East Simmons Bayou. And north of that, there's a half a mile of government marshland that you can never build on. That makes the property extremely rural. Now, I spend a lot of time in downtown Ocean Springs, and I can't help noticing the number of henhouses in downtown Ocean Springs. Now, if they could have that many henhouses in an urban area, why can't you have a henhouse in a rural area? Now, there's about four pieces of property vacant on that East Simmons Bayou. And they can't ever build an apartment because the lots, the lots are six thousand square feet, and you couldn't even put a parking lot for an apartment. So that most, in the next fifty years, they'll have four more homes there. It'll be rural forever. So I have no problem with them having chickens, and that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Was there somebody else to speak for it? I see two more. You come on up first, and you'll be next. No, you can come on. Yeah, you. Give us your name and address, please.
Lynnwood Stowe. I live at twenty-two oh five South Sixteenth Street. As far as the, I won't keep your time, but I have no reason whatsoever to doubt what these people say. I haven't seen her chickens. I don't live that far from her, five hundred feet. I have no problem whatsoever about a few chickens. I've lived at Key West. I've lived a lot of different places. Chickens don't bother me. Coons do.
They bother everybody. Thank you a lot. Is there anyone else to speak for this? All right, is there anyone here to speak against it? You can come. Give us your name and address, please, sir.
My name is Joel Rawson. I live at two-three-three-seven East Simmons Bayou Drive. There's another letter that was given to me this morning. The rules are that there are no chickens allowed there. If the rules are not there, I have no problems. The person that complained called me because I had a similar situation that happened across the road from me with another lady, and I always went to that lady whenever she had, she had nine or ten dogs, always barking. I went to her. Always my approach was to ask, what can we do to better the situation? She got chickens. I didn't have any problem with the chickens. She got a dang rooster. I had a problem with the rooster. Four o'clock in the morning, ten, eleven o'clock at night, this rooster's out there crowing in her backyard, which is my front window. All right, the rules are you can't have chickens in this area. The only issue I would have with chickens being on the bayou side is the water runoff. I haven't seen their chickens. I don't live that far from them, five hundred feet. I have no problem whatsoever about a few chickens. I've lived at Key West, I've lived a lot of different places. Chickens don't bother me. Coons do. That's all I have to say.
They bother everybody. Thank you a lot. Is there anyone else to speak for this? All right, is there anyone here to speak against it? You can come. Give us your name and address, please, sir.
My name is Joel Rawson. I live at two-three-three-seven East Simmons Bayou Drive. There's another letter that was given to me this morning. The rules are that there are no chickens allowed there. If the rules are not there, I have no problems. The person that complained called me because I had a similar situation that happened across the road from me with another lady. And I always went to that lady whenever she had, she had nine or ten dogs, always barking. I went to her, always my approach was to ask, what can we do to better the situation? She got chickens. I didn't have any problem with the chickens. She got a dang rooster. I had a problem with the rooster. Four o'clock in the morning, ten, eleven o'clock at night, this rooster's out there crowing in, in her backyard, which is my front window. All right, the rules are you can't have chickens in this area. The only issue I would have with chickens being on the bayou side is the water runoff. Chicken, chicken poop has high, high intensity of nitrogens and phosphate. If that gets into the bayou, it promotes algae growth, which sucks the oxygen out of the water. There goes my fishing. Now, I'm retired, so I hear it. I don't hear them in the house. If I go out on my back deck, which I spend a lot of time, I do hear the roosters crow. They're not that loud to me because I'm a little bit further away than the main person that's complaining. That lady can't be here today because she's got COVID. Now, I know there's two other letters, one from Sarah and Jeremiah Cove, who owns a lot next to me, who plan on building there. And I told them what was going on, and they were totally against it, and I think they sent, sent a letter to supervisors about that. Like I said, if the rules are changed, they're changed. I got no complaints. But right now, the law says they can't, they still have got them, they've had them there for a year. When does it stop? Exceptions, where do they stop? Bacon is high. Do I get six pigs and put in my yard? I mean, we could go on and on with this. Exceptions are not a good rule because it just passes on down the line. That's all I got to say. Thank you.
I have a question real quick. If they're, so if the, if the rooster wasn't there, would it bother you?
No, not as much, but I'm still concerned with what's it going to do to the bayou.
Okay. All right. Thank you, sir. Is anyone else here to speak against this? Anyone at all?
We had a, a call this morning from a David Colette, uh, and his comments were that the Perrys are new to the area and should have checked the rules. He used to have chickens and he had to get rid of them when he found out he couldn't have them. So that was a call we had this morning. Need that letter.
All right, and before we, y'all do have a chance to come back with this sort of bottom?
Yeah. Yeah. Seven.
Jamie, um, a reply to is the guy who said he, we should have checked first, and he got rid of his chickens. He doesn't live there, and he hasn't lived there in a long time. And he evidently didn't check first and assumed since we were a rural area that he could also have chickens or wouldn't he have checked too? He should have done the exact same thing, so that's hypocritical. But, um, he got rid of his chickens because he moved, and he doesn't live there anymore. And so he is just friends with the neighbor who reported us. And does her electrical work without permits for her. But anyways, um, yeah, that's where that came from. And, um, then Joel that spoke, he told us that he didn't know we had chickens until the lady called him and told him to report us because we were scary. So, and he didn't have any problems with their chickens. And chicken manure is actually something you can buy at Walmart to put on your grass to help your grass grow, and Tractor Supply sells it so that you can help your plants grow. It's not going to ruin the bayou if it does happen to rain and poop goes in there. And neither is his animals or the neighbor's dog's poop or whatever else washes into the bayou. That's just absurd.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am.
The amount, the amount of poop these chickens put out is very miniscule compared to how many birds are in the bayou right now. There's pelicans, pool doos, there's, uh, cormorants, there's, uh, Canadian geese that come down. I don't think that's part, you know, they're, they're not normally around here. The, the bayou is, is, is full of wildlife. It's not just fish. And I did look up, uh, the zoning laws, and, and if you try and look up Jackson County zoning map, it is a difficult thing to find. I can find Ocean Springs very easily, but Jackson County is very difficult. Matter of fact, I gave up, just came up here and got a map from them. And they, you know, from the planning commission, they had it ready to go, like they're used to handing it out to people. I don't know. It, it's a very difficult thing to go online and find. You search, you search, I'm sure it's out there, and if you know where to go, and if you used to dealing with this, you could find it quickly. So I looked in the, uh, the ordinances to see what was allowed before we got these chickens, and I found residential, single-family home, uh, you know, said we could have, uh, uh, the livestock. And I thought, well, we're a single-family home, this should be good. I would have never guessed we were zoned for apartment complexes or mobile home parks. Um, it's just, my family has owned that property, and I bought this property from my mother of, a few years ago. Uh, and we've had gardens, and they've had ducks, and just down the road was an entire horse farm. That horse farm didn't ruin the bayou. It didn't ruin the bayou. It's right on the bayou. It didn't ruin it. Everything's still working out there. We still have fish, no problem. And they had a ton of horses. I mean, a horse farm, they had tons of, of horses out there. It's now a residential area. It's R1, so I guess if, you know, they have enough property, they can have chickens. It's a lot more high-density than the property we are at right now.
And the guy who is beside Joel, who left the vacant lot, actually had a lot for sale. So I don't know if that matters.
So, yeah, so if, if he's planning on, on, on building there, then he probably should take down the for sale sign he has on the property.
All right. You can't speak now, please. All right.
So, let me give you a little history on Gulf Park Estates. All right, so as Mr. Broadneck said earlier, after Camille, Jackson County was required by law to come up with a zoning map for the whole county, for the unincorporated part of the county. Gulf Park Estates was developed way before Hurricane Katrina. It was developed in the early sixties. So when it was developed, it was developed as a multi-use, uh, R1, uh, condos, apartments, mobile homes. It, when it was developed, it was developed as, as a pocket. And Greg Williams, I saw him here earlier, I'm sure Greg can tell you that he's been in the real estate business since the sixties in Gulf Park, uh, St. Andrews, Gulf Park Estates area, probably tell you the same thing. So what happened was when the county took over or was mandated to come up with the zoning, they just took the existing layout of Gulf Park Estates, St. Andrews. They took all the existing stuff, and that's how they created the zoning. So basically, Gulf Park Estates has a north end and a south end. So the north end has residential, in the middle of the residential is some multi, multi-use stuff, okay? Then on the south end, same thing. South end, you have R1, large residential lots, and then you have the, uh, multi-use smaller lots, is what they call them. Smaller residential lots, like an R4. So R4 lot size is what, six thousand square feet?
Seven thousand and six thousand.
Yeah, seven thousand, six thousand square feet for the R3 and R4. But that zoning was done when it was mandated to do it. So, so basically, that zoning's been there since the seventies when it was mandated to do that. So all the boards before me and, and now have just tried to comply with what it's zoned, okay? A perfect example is the golf course was zoned as a golf course. Of course, it was zoned for, uh, uh, multi-use also, to go along with the golf course. And then later on in two thousand and six, it was rezoned again for what it's, uh, condos and residential and, and multifamily stuff. So, so that area there has always been zoned what it's zoned, okay? As far as, as far as noise ordinances and stuff go, I've tried. I've tried to get a noise ordinance down there. I've tried to get a fireworks ordinance. I've tried, you know? But I can tell you, uh, my seventeen years at the sheriff's office dealing with Gulf Park Estates, we've always said disturbing the peace was our noise ordinance, which today it still is our noise ordinance. And usually from ten PM to six AM is when people are trying, trying to rest, okay? So, so if you have any out-loud noises between ten PM and six, six AM, it was always required to fill out a report, call the sheriff's office, fill out a report, and the homeowner could sign charges on disturbing the peace if they felt like they needed to do that, okay? So, so that's our noise ordinance. That's the only thing we've got. And, uh, because this county is so rural, even though we do have some high-density neighborhood areas in this county, it's still rural, okay? So I guess what I'm trying to tell you is that the ordinances we have is we have, you know? And, and the way I've always treated these ordinances since I've been in this office is, is, is if I have to, I have to do it by the neighbors. I have to think about the neighbors, okay? So as of today, I've heard more for than I've heard the same amount against. So we're at a fifty-fifty impasse here, you know? Because the people that showed up today, plus the other phone calls, I have not received a phone call in support of what you're doing. Now, I haven't received the first phone call. But seeing these people here today has, has brought your stock up, so to say. So, so you do have immediate neighbors that are, that are for you, okay? So.
Did you get any letters, the letters that the people sent that they?
I, I got a copy of the letter. If we need to submit it here, I, it's on my phone, I could send that in. So that, it was a letter they said they sent in.
Yeah, I received no letters, uh, in support. Uh, I've received, like I said, about six phone calls, uh, uh, you know, not in support. So, um, and two of those people were people that live in the Gulf Park Estates area. They don't, they're not necessarily your neighbors, but they live in the Gulf Park Estates area because they were told in the past they couldn't have livestock on their property, okay? So, so the, the, the issue we have here is, is that, uh, I'm, I'm at an impasse here because with the people that showed up here for you in support versus the, the people who are not supporting it, it's, it's kind of a fifty-fifty right now.
I said, I got a letter, it's in my email that was sent to us, that was, we were told that it was sent to you as well. Um, so they sent us a copy, just in case. Also, uh, I requested, since it's supposed to be public knowledge of letters that were sent in, and, um, I was only given one letter that was sent in. So if there's multiple letters, that, it wasn't given to me that there was multiple letters sent in. I was given one letter that was sent in that was against us.
So do the people count that part outside of the five hundred?
So, I, I, so in Gulf Park Estates, I take all the complaints, whether they're good or bad, I take all of them.
I would have visited more people, but I thought it was only relevant to five hundred.
And if that's the case, we should have another hearing. I could go out and, and get some more force, uh, for this, because I thought it was within the five hundred corridor is what we were staying to, and that's what I stayed to.
So.
Our great point is, is it, does it bother anybody? I mean, does it bother anybody? Have we bothered anybody? Even the people who have spoken, but they don't, have said that they have not been bothered by them. They just are sticking to the rules.
So.
We haven't bothered anybody. They haven't been on anyone's property.
Let me get, let me get to my compromise. No, I, I get your passion, and I'm sorry for your loss and everything, I really am. And I understand, this is not the first time therapy animals, whatever, has come before this board, so. But, but I'm, I'm willing, I'm willing to compromise. I, I'll probably take a little heat for it, but I'm willing to compromise because you've had an outpouring of support come in that I haven't heard from yet before this hearing. So how important are the roosters? Are the roosters important? Do you have to have them?
We got the one rooster, he's really important because we do have hawks in the area. And with-
You can't shoot them.
And you can't do anything with hawks. I mean, you yell at them, but they don't listen to you. And you can't shoot them. Uh, but that rooster, he'll go over there and he will tear that hawk up. And a hawk will think twice about coming back. And we do got to let the, the chickens out so we can clean the pens. We clean the pens constantly.
And then the one lady was the only lady who had a problem with the rooster. Even Joel said he could only, he can't hear it inside of his house, and the neighbor who's directly beside of us can't hear it, and they were practically, none of us couldn't hear it, so.
So would you, would you be willing to put a protective net, low-level protective net while you got the chickens out, cleaning the pen? And, and, so here's, here's my compromise. I, I'm, I'm willing, I'm willing to go along with your request, but there'll be some limits. Uh, you know, if you, if you can get rid of the roosters, only have chickens there, and, and I would have to limit the chickens to twelve. So if you could do with dozen chickens, uh, I'm good with that, all right? Because most everybody that's your neighbor, your immediate neighbors, said they didn't even know they were there. So I tend to agree with that. So, uh, uh, if they're telling the truth, I tend to agree with that. Number, number three would be, uh, none of the, you're not selling chickens there. So you're not, you're not advertising chickens for sale. You're not, you're just, you're just chickens of your own personal therapeutic use.
We, we have some there that, if they, I'm sorry.
You could also set it for a planning commission review in a year.
Yeah, that's what I was, that was my fifth. That was number five. So number three is, is, um, you know, limited to twelve chickens, and as long as there's no evidence of any chickens, I don't care if you give the eggs away, don't care if you give the chickens away. You can't sell them. You cannot run a retail chicken and egg business out of your, out of your house. You can't, you can't do that. I don't have a problem with them being therapeutic, I really don't. So, uh, and then, uh, number four would be to make sure that the property stays clean and, you know? And then five would be a yearly review from our planning department to make sure that, you know? And also, too, if we ever get word there's more than twelve chickens, we're going to come out there, we're going to take a look at it, you know? But in, in the grand scheme of things, I really don't have an issue with what you're doing now that you have neighbor support. That's all I ever want. I just want people to come tell me how they feel, you know? I always hear from a lot of the people who don't want stuff, but I never hear from the people who are in support of stuff. So when I don't hear from people who are in support of stuff, then it makes my decision easy. I'm going to, I'm going to vote against it, and I would hope you would understand that, you know?
Don't think you felt a problem with it, just to say.
Well, that's why my, my, my comment to you and everybody else is, if the neighbors are good with it, I'm good with it. If I've said that once, I've said it a thousand times since I've been in office. It don't matter what the issue is.
And we discussed that on the phone, so exactly what you said. And that's why it threw me off, is like when it was at that, that hearing, that's not what was said. And I was like, well, that's not what we talked about. That's just, so I think it really swayed the, the planning commission's decision.
Mr. Moser's suggestions?
If we, if we can, if we, if we can move the roosters, get them off the property, no more than twelve chickens at a time, at a time, no more than twelve chickens. No retail sales of chickens or eggs there on the property, and then a one-year review, maybe for the next two years, a one-year review from the planning commission to make sure everything's, but, but you've got to take care of the waste from the chickens. Don't let it go in the bayou.
Yeah, we never do that.
If we ever have any evidence of that, that's going to be part of this compromise.
What is our timeline? It'll take a little bit to get them, you know, these rehomed.
Ninety days, what?
Mr. Perry, if you, if you have a letter, you mentioned can't submit it after the fact, but if you want to read it into the record with the name of the, uh, an address of the person that, that submitted that letter to you.
Yes, sir. It's, it's in our email. It's been, it's been a little bit, but.
You understand that we're making an exception. So that means if something ever happens to that property and you sell it, that exception goes away. You can't sell your property and let somebody know they can have chickens there. It don't work like that.
I saw what happened with the other poor person that.
So, so that's only a special exception to allow this pending planning department review over the next two years.
You make that in form of a motion?
I'll, I'll make that in a form of a motion. All right.
Oh, here it is. It's from, uh, John and Cheryl Noble. And they are in support of Jamie and Tom Perry's request to keep chickens.
Do you have an address?
I, it's part of, I was going to read it. It says, we live at two-three-three-three East Simmons Bayou, which is within 500 feet of the Perrys at twenty-three-seventeen East Simmons Bayou. We personally see no reason why they would not be allowed to keep their chickens. This is the county, and the chickens are fenced in and are not a nuisance to others. We sometimes pick up our granddaughter from the bus in front of their house who was not aware they had chickens. There was no smell, noise, or evidence that they were even on the property. Now that we have been made aware that the chickens are on the property, we have noticed their coop, which was nicely built and matches the colors of their house and roof. We feel strongly they should be able to keep their chickens, as I doubt they are a bother to any neighbors. We understand their daughter thinks of them as her pets, and they do not, and they do produce eggs, so in this economy, that is a reason enough to keep them. Please consider our support to this matter when you make this decision. I feel our supervisors have much more important things to deal with than making a child get rid of their pets that are enclosed in a fence and well-taken care of. Thank you.
Do you need me to forward this to you? No, no, I just, the court reporter took that down, and, and I don't think we have a way to print that right now to put it in the record, which is why I asked you if you would read that into the record.
Okay.
So you're good with the, with the, with the?
Yeah, we'll make, we'll make it happen.
Okay. Then I make that motion.
Okay, sounds good.
Overturn the planning commission's decision and with those stipulations.
Based on those stipulations? All right. I'll second the motion. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, no. Very good.
All right, thank you. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right. That brings us down to closed session. Seat. Let everybody clear out for a minute.
There he is, right there. Your, your mentor, right there.
I told him everything he knows, Randy.
Hey, who taught who?
Oh, y'all give us, y'all give us just a minute. We need to go into closed termination, seat first, sufficient...
Let me go through the, let me go through the categories that we've got.
Okay.
Just tell me when you're ready.
Y'all excuse us just a minute. Go ahead, Jimmy.
Mr. Cummins, we've got four things, I believe, on the agenda for executive session. First is a discussion with the Jackson County Port Authority regarding the location, relocation, expansion of business and/or industry, and prospective purchase of land and/or leasing of land. And personnel matter with regard to the maintenance department. Update on the status of the George County, Jackson County litigation as it relates to Singing River Services, and one small potential litigation matter involving the, the county golf course, an incident that occurred at the county golf course.
Can I get a motion to stay in executive session?
I think Brian's got two.
I covered, yeah.
Yeah, I make a motion to stay in closed, go into closed session to determine need for executive session.
I'll second. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, no. All right. Brian, you want to make the announcement or...
Yeah.